Good afternoon and welcome. Putting your name up is a very difficult thing to do, so I commend everybody that put their name in. And I would like to acknowledge tonight the presence of some of the elected candidates. Mayor-elect Counselor Kylie is here. Brick Owen, Casey Owens, Tracy Barb, or Stacy, sorry, Stacy, or Stacy White. Dennis Perry, Jean Ivanoff, that's pretty well everyone except for I think just one of them. So congratulations to you all. And it's nice come December the 4th, I usually be at these seats. And it's nice to see that one of the things you're going to be looking at, the bylaws, is sell a property. So that's always a great thing to start off with. So we'll start our meeting tonight with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of November 6, 2018 as presented.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Is there any petitions and allegations? None. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations?
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held June 21st. The regular meeting of council held September 18th. The meeting to open sealed quotations for miscellaneous signage held September 18th. The meeting to open sealed proposals for timber harvesting held September 27th. The meeting to open sealed tenders for winter sand held October 9th. The meeting to open sealed quotations for clay capping at the Kirkland Lake landfill site held October 30th. And the TPR Committee of Management meeting held November 5th.
Any discussion on those minutes? None? Okay. All in favor? Thank you, that's accepted. Item six, reports of municipal officers in communications. The CAO, Wolf, you're going to speak on a number of items.
Yes, sir. We have the agenda starting with the results of the RFP to harvest timber on municipal land. Back, I don't believe I should read the report for you, but roughly back in 2012, the department undertook a forest management plan, process for the three townships. Areas that had timber and the associated values were identified and a plan put together to eventually harvest or manage them in accordance with the Crown directorates. In earlier this year, council directed department to issue RFP to harvest the timber on select parcels of land in the Winnie Lake area. That RFP was collected by three parties. One picked it up and put a bid in. As per the procurement policy, we took that bid. It comes out to roughly $70,000 and will be, I think, in line with what council's expectations were regarding the harvesting of timber on that land. It will be done within the next three years. It is supporting local employment as local contractors will be working in the field. As well, it will be processed in this region. My recommendation is, and we went ahead and signed it as per the directions given to the CAO, my purpose in bringing this report forward is to advise council and I suppose to seek an endorsement of the decision that we made.
Any discussion? Counselor Mino.
Wolf, is that, the income derived from that is going to go where?
I would bring that back to council for its attribution as required.
Is there no, it's not tied into the economic development with the?
It, not at this budget year because we knew we wouldn't be realizing any revenues. I would suggest to council in the future that it would be brought forward towards a reserve.
All in favor?
That will come back later with all the things that Wolf has done.
The second issue is the Roscoe Sawmill. Brief history, we had money under a community in crisis back in the early part of the century, sounds so long ago. There was no use, there was no ability to use the money to do as what the government had desired. Our Roscoe had come forward and proposed a sawmill as a business development opportunity for Kirkland Lake. The money was allocated towards that, part as grant, part as loan. He has been in operation since 2007, 2009 I believe, or 2007. And in 2018, the issue was brought forward to council to clean up some outstanding financial issues with that. We were directed to put together a new agreement as per Roscoe's request. It was a lease-to-own agreement. We subsequently took a, engaged a appraisal company to do an assessment on that property as to what the value would be. For the purposes of the audience, the property was assessed in two different ways. One is if you had a continuing and functioning independent sawmill. And I think the, I'm sorry, I don't recall right now, I've gone blank, but I think the price tag around that was about $600,000. And the second appraisal mechanism was as simple industrial land, given the use that was there. That came in around $340,000. Based on the consideration that we do not own a sawmill license, we do not have wood, assessing the property as being a sawmill for operation in the future really didn't make any sense. We selected and brought forward to council the appraisal at $340,000 as an industrial lot. That was accepted by Roscoe following our ability to show how it fit to other industrial lots of that stature. And then we took from that and we put in additional rent, being the NOHFC loan that the town has, as well as legal and other associated costs. Total would be $916,000 over four years with a $50,000 deposit paid upfront and going towards the loan. We've been able to work that out, where we brought that back to council now for, again, your endorsement as CAO was directed to negotiate that agreement.
Questions, council? Counselor Chamier.
So Wolf, does that mean Roscoe first, he will be all paid up for everything, like the town and the NOHFC?
At the end of four years, that is the intent, yes. Taxes are a separate issue from this agreement that he deals with, with the tax department. This is specifically for the lease-to-own payments as well as the loan payments.
And is there a schedule for payments, or?
Yes, there is. It equals roughly $18,000 a month. And the early indications are that it's a schedule that both parties can live with.
All right. I just want to say thank you for your hard work. I mean, we've been working on this for, I don't know, six, seven, eight years maybe?
It's a retirement project, yes. It's a retirement project, yes.
Yeah. And finally, we see it achieve, this is extra revenue for the town, that's awesome, and hope Joe and Terry continued success in their business. I think they had a lot of patience on both sides and a lot of headaches sometimes, but the result at the end of the day is awesome. It's good news. Thanks, Wolf.
I'll pass on those comments to Roscoe's.
Jessica, Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, I agree with Jean-Guy. Town employees, Wolf, you've been involved in it, done a great job getting this back on track. And within four years, we'll be in pretty good shape. I just had one question. If they defaulted on the taxes, is the loan in default automatically as well?
If there's a default on the taxes, it comes to the attention of council right away. You do have a little bit of flexibility in dealing with them. You don't have to terminate the agreement or anything like that right away. You do have some latitude. However, it is tied together. There's a clause in there that says you must stay current on your taxes.
Okay. Thank you.
Wolf, with the, have we secured the $50,000 deposit?
Yes, we have.
So we have.
I would like to point out, we're bringing it back as a resolution as well because we have to make our arrangements with NOHFC. They are in agreement with the proposed arrangements, but we do have to make a resolution or provide them with a resolution asking for a restructuring of the loan accordingly.
Okay. So it's moved by Counselor Mino, seconded by Counselor Roman. The council authorizes the Director of Economic Development to amend the NOHFC loan associated with project number 26032 to reflect a new schedule of payments as per the agreement with Roscoe logging.
The next item regards Kirkland Lake solar project update. In the spring, council directed the department to proceed with the solar project. There were some hurdles, the election of Doug Ford not being the least of them. That has been cleared. Projects that have advanced under the IESO FIT III are secured and can move forward. I had to call around a couple of times to make sure that that information was accurate and that it wouldn't come back on us. Apparently, the government recognizes that they would be paying out the value of the contract as well as other costs incurred, so these projects are going forward. We've had numerous negotiations with Capus Kasing Energy. The timeline to build is, or the preferred timeline is during the winter months when the ground is hard. They have sent us the lease agreements. That would be a lease of the land by the town to KL Solar. KL Solar being a corporation formed by Cap Energy and the town of Kirkland Lake. And once we submit those lease agreements, they will begin working on site clearing and construction. They anticipate that the foundations would be in by the end of December. So once again, I was told to negotiate that through and I'm asking for your endorsement.
Any questions on our discussion on that before we? Okay, that'll come back as a?
Yeah, not at this council.
Oh, okay. Okay. Adam D., he is called.
The next item regards Culver Park Operating Authority Agreement. The municipality had formed an agreement with Culver Park Operating Authority. I think the initial one was in the 1990s. It was renewed at, I think, early 2000s. Anyway, we were supposed to bring that back and update the agreement. Culver Park Operating Authority does have some additional measures they have to take to bring themselves up to a point where they can sign that agreement. We're asking council for an additional delay to allow that to happen, an extension of six months if possible, please.
Counselor Mino.
I think that the committee wanted council representation, so just maybe for your sake that, one of the committees would be the Culver Park one, and you might want to appoint somebody to that position.
In reply to that, Norm, we have made a proposed, proposal for a representative from council, yet to come to council.
Yeah, I think our present counselor is Counselor, Counselor Barker is president.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council adjourns the, approves the deferral of executing an operating agreement with the Culver Park Operating Authority for a period of up to six months.
All in favor?
The last item regards a request for an additional capital allocation. I was made aware about a week and a half ago that proposed maintenance on the parking lot, specifically the electrical vehicle plug-in, or sorry, the plugins for the vehicles, was undertaken, but the project exceeded the scope that was allocated in the operating budget and has now, will exceed $5,000. Issue being that they replaced the panel as well as a pole, so that's pushing it over. I have asked that we allocate $10,000 towards this. I believe that we would come in under budget, but it, we need to make sure that we have that extra bit of breathing space as, once the pole comes out, we may find that it has an impact on some of the other poles there. I've gone through the capital budget and I find that we are, some of the projects that we have finished are under what was estimated. I'm thinking specifically Government Road. That was less than anticipated because there was less blasting required. I'm comfortable that with the addition of this, we will remain in the same capital budget envelope as we had promised council when we began.
Any discussion? We have a resolution. Counsel, just Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, I think the urgency on this one comes into play as well from a safety standpoint, so fully support getting on with it.
Thank you.
So it's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council approves the addition to the 2018 capital budget in the amount of $10,000 for the physical services parking lot electrical repairs and the amount be drawn from the levy.
All in favor?
That is a verbal update. I'm trying to think, it was during the summer, we brought forward and asked for a resolution to submit funding applications to the senior levels of government for the extension and upgrade of municipal services related to Kirkland Lake Gold's expansion at the Four Shaft. That, those applications have gone in and I'm anticipating a reply from, sorry, from Fednor roughly within 80 days. So it will be as we get into the winter and the work then would, if it's approved, would take place in the spring and summer. I brought this back, one, to let you know that the applications are in. The second is that NOHFC, the other funding agency that I applied to, has asked for a bylaw that specifies specifically what the dollar amounts are, what the town's share is, and that the town will cover the cost overruns. When it comes to covering cost overruns on a project like this, we have a number of ways that we control that. One obviously is that we do our homework and do the due diligence in the procurement process. The other one is that if the funding that has been requested doesn't come forward, we have the liberty to reduce the scope of the project accordingly. As well, we have that ability to engage the private sector. There is one aspect of this project specific to Kirkland Lake Gold, that's shooting the pipes under Highway 66. And we will be approaching Kirkland Lake Gold for their commitment to pay the proponents' share of that part of the project. The other part of the project, as I had reported in the summer, is upgrading our ability to control the volume, pressure, and flow of water to make sure that we can manage whatever Kirkland Lake Gold is drawing as well to have sufficient to meet our other industrial, commercial, residential needs. That would be roughly $845,000 worth of work and most of those items that would be upgraded have been identified in the town's capital asset management plan. If we are successful with the funding, then the town's share would probably be 10% of that $845,000. That would move us significantly forward with our infrastructure requirements. So I thought it worthwhile, put it in and hope for the best. So it's an update on that and there would be a bylaw coming back to, with the wording that is required by NOHFC.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, Wolf, I know it's come to council on a few occasions, just verbal comments about the water pressure out in shop used to the residents because there's a lot of, residents have auxiliary pumps for additional water pressure. So that's going to eliminate that problem that we're having?
I don't think, sir, that it will. It will assist with the problem, but it won't eliminate it. I tried to put that in, but I have to say very, very carefully on the side of economic development and job creation. If we're addressing a residential need, that's on the municipality 100%. If we were to do that right now, I think we would be stretching our infrastructure budgets a little bit too much.
Okay.
So item six two, Peter, you're going to come up in financial disclosure requirements? Guess this is an Ontario regulation? Yeah, welcome for the first time.
The municipal act specifically on Ontario Regulation 28409 requires that municipalities annually adopt by resolution a report of expenses allowed to be excluded from the annual budget and the estimated impact of their exclusion. This report was prepared by the treasurer with recommendation that council adopted.
Any discussion, questions?
So this usually comes to council around the same time that the budget is passed and the audit, financial audit, it's one of the things that we've just gotten to now. So it's moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council approves and adopts the report prepared by the town treasurer addressing the financial disclosure requirements under Ontario Regulation 284/09.
Any questions, comments? Counselor Roman.
Just with regards to the landfill closure, that $100,000, what does that refer to?
That would be an expense, an accrual set aside for preparation for landfill closure whenever that happens.
But is that just this year's contribution or because $100,000 is?
It's not a contribution. These are non-cash items. So because they're non-cash, they're not included in the budget?
It's a promise, sorry, counselor, it is a promise of dollars that will be spent on that in the future. It's non-cash, as Peter says, and it will be recorded every year. It will be brought forward as to what the other costs are based on, if I understand it correctly, changes that are made at the landfill, our environmental compliance, every aspect like that will be reflected in those costs going forward and that will be brought to council like that.
So as we get closer then to landfill closure, this number is going to escalate? Is that?
Not necessarily, but it will always be a number on that sheet that we will be dealing with. If we have not had to, and I'm sorry, I am speaking out of turn, I do believe that the number will be there. I don't believe it will necessarily escalate as we get closer to it, but I could be wrong. I would refer that to our auditor.
Because I would suspect like the obligation is going to be well beyond $100,000. So I'm just wondering why only $100,000 is being identified right now?
How we got to that particular calculation, I'll defer to Peter.
That calculation would have been derived from our auditor. And as mentioned, this is non-cash, meaning we're not taking money and setting it aside for that future closure. It's more of a reporting, an accounting reporting that's required.
Does that help?
No, I don't quite understand.
They don't, where it came from originally was that the government did not like the idea that municipalities would say, yeah, we know we have a landfill, don't worry about it, we'll close it properly when we get there. And then they got there and didn't have any money. So they want to show within your accounting practices that you are attributing dollars, you're recognizing that those dollars have to be allocated to that and that you're, under these regulations, even though it's not a cash in hand, it's a commitment going forward. And that will adjust as we go with that and that's with the other items as well.
I can add that on the audited financials, you will see, and actually I believe it's referenced in the report, the accumulated amount of the landfill closure, post-closure liability.
Thank you.
Counselor Chamier.
I think Jim, it's probably, well, our problem, we don't know how much it would cost to close it. Like you have an idea in your head, but I don't know where that number comes from. Maybe we should try to get a more precise number or?
We try that and that's why we leave it to the auditor because there's different considerations that the government could, would, might start bringing in. I'm thinking specifically, say, regarding environmental considerations. It's not just the closing and not just the monitoring, but what's the impact, say, for taking down your infrastructure that's there too. They have a better grasp on that and by using the auditor, it's a new, it's not town staff trying to direct it. It's a third party, yeah, third party, based on what they know from their context.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, where Jim's coming from, I think there's that unknown factor that maybe we're going to end up with a couple million dollar bill when we do the closure. So we don't set aside and reserve funds for it. Maybe it's a consideration of council. I, is that where you're coming from, Jim?
Well, yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah, down the road, what happens? Yeah. Food for thought.
So it's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council approves and adopts the report prepared by the town treasurer addressing the financial disclosure requirements under Ontario Regulation 284/09.
All in favor? Thank you, Peter. Okay, item six three.
Okay, so these requests come every year to council. These are the Remembrance Day requests. This did come in October and the Legion has been preparing, so they've gone ahead with whatever preparations they can do, but they are asking for council to accept this resolution. So it's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council approves the following requests from the Royal Canadian Legion Branch 87 regarding Remembrance Day campaign activities. Number one, poppy tag days were held Friday, October 26th and Saturday, October 27th. Remembrance Week be proclaimed from November 4th to 11th, 2018, in and for the town of Kirkland Lake. The Remembrance Day flag be flown at Town Hall during Remembrance Week. A parade permit be issued on Friday, November 11th, beginning at 10:30 a.m. And the town of Kirkland Lake purchase a wreath to be laid at the Senate half during Remembrance Day ceremonies on November 11th.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
Okay, the next request is from the Chamber of Commerce and they are asking for a parade permit for their Santa Claus parade. So I have a resolution that's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council approves the request from the Kirkland Lake District Chamber of Commerce to hold the Santa Claus parade on Friday, November 23rd, beginning at 7:30 p.m.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
Okay, so this is my post-election report to you. This was the fourth election that we utilized the electronic vote tabulators and I'm very happy to say that everything ran smoothly with them this year. We did hold three advance dates and our dates and times were staggered so that we could best accommodate most people's schedules. And we did have a turnout of 44% of Kirkland Lake voters, which was higher than the provincial average, which was 37. We did do a recount and I'm so happy to say that. We did do a recount and I'm so happy to say that the recount showed that the vote tabulators worked out fabulously first time. I do have some recommendations that I won't, we'll go through with you unless you want me to, but these are just recommendations that I wanted to put in a report that will be carried through to the 2023 election. So I will be next bringing forth the bylaws, asking for you to ratify these results.
And of course, as you said, your recommendations, Joanne would best listen to by the new council, mayor and council, if you can be doing that.
Yes, because we will the year before be coming forward with all these recommendations, policies and bylaws that will be put in place, which is the signed bylaw. We know there's problems with that. We'd like to make an amendment to the recount bylaw, so these are all things that will be dealt with probably three years from now.
Thank you. Item seven, introduction and reading, consideration of bylaws.
So it's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw 18-131 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a policing service agreement with the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services, repealing bylaw 18-094, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed. I would just like to explain that this is, this, you did do a bylaw before, 18094, but it actually named the solicitor general as the person that we were making the agreement with, but they have since changed and they would like it now to be reflected to show that it's the Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services.
Okay, all in favor?
It's Carrie.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw 18-132 being a bylaw to confirm the 2018 municipal election results, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw 18-133 being a bylaw to authorize an extension to de- the decommissioning of the Swastika wastewater treatment plant project, amending bylaw 16-079, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed. So this is just moving forward the deadline, the completion date for this project.
All in favor?
It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw 18-134 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a site plan control agreement at 57 Government Road West, which is Dino's Pizzeria, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw 18-135 being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Ministry of Community Safety and Correctional Services for the 2018-2019 Ride Grant Program, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw 18-136 being a bylaw to authorize the chief administrative officer to submit an application to NOHFC for a funding grant towards infrastructure upgrades supporting KLG expansion, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's Carrie, thank you.
Notices of motion? None. Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw 18-137 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held November 6, 2018, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor?
It's Carrie, thank you.
Counselors' reports? Counselor Minow.
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate the new slate of counselors and the mayor-elect, Pat. I know you have good intentions, much like I did when I started 18 years ago, and I hope that you carry through with your intentions in the best interests of the Kirkland Lake population. I hope as well that you work as a team, because it does require teamwork to, to reach that consensus and to have a majority and also a clear direction. Kirkland Lake's been good to me and Kirkland Lakers have been good to me as well, so I, in my 18 years, I can share this with you, is that if you're honest with them and sincere and you listen, you'll have no problem representing them well. I've been proud to have served Kirkland Lake. I did serve McGarry area for 11 years, so I'm leaving Kirkland Lake with 29 years of municipal politics and it was all good. I thank Kirkland Lake again for a good relationship. And if I have another bit of advice to give you, new council, is that you should respect, you should listen, and you should also trust your staff. They are the backbone of what we do here and without them, you're not going to have anything done and if you think you're better than them, you've got something else coming. So I would suggest that you really take them seriously in their, in their recommendations and that you work as a cohesive unit with them. So with that, I would say thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you, Counselor Minow. Counselor Morgan.
Thanks, Tony. I just wanted to take this platform to just very quickly thank a lot of people, actually. I wanted to thank the people who obviously supported me in the most, in the recent election. But more importantly, I want to thank people of Kirkland Lake for allowing me to serve for the last 18 years. I've done it with a lot of pride and I've done it with a lot of enthusiasm and I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to serve for, for the last 18 years. And I'm even grateful that they helped me decide when to hang up the cleats, so on that front. And I also want to thank staff, Norm alluded to it, but I think the staff that we have in place right now are stellar. I think, I mean, obviously it's the senior staff that we deal with mostly, but I can't think of anybody, you know, who, any one of them, who doesn't come to work with enthusiasm and gets up in the morning and wants to do the best job for Kirkland Lake. And obviously, there's been some friendships that have developed over the years and I certainly respect those and, but I just wanted to thank on, on my behalf, all the staff for doing such an awesome job for Kirkland Lake and, and for continuing to do an awesome job in the future and look forward to maybe having a cup of coffee once in a while, so thanks again.
And thank you, Counselor Morgan. Counselor Shamir.
Yeah, I would like to thank you also, thanks to Todd and Norm, who really put that, put that well. One thing as a counselor that you learn is politics is not easy. Actually, not say politics, government is not easy. They have all kinds of rules and we have to navigate to their law and their rules and we cannot do whatever we want. And that was hard to, to accept, I guess. Sometime we'd like to do things faster, but it just takes time. And as we know, time, it took so long to do all of the things that happened the last two years. It's been actually awesome the last two, three years, what's going on around town and KLG has been really a savior for us. They have done so much for us. I'd like to thank you to all the staff, not just the senior staff, like Todd said, but also the guy that works on the streets and we don't realize how hard they work until we're here, because that we know what's going on all the time. So we might hear one night, they might be at, beside our neighbor to fix the water, but they do that on a regular basis. Between the morning, they get called, they go out there and it's minus 40 and they have to, to unfreeze water taps or whatever. So it's, it's, it's not easy. Easy to complain about them, but it's not an easy job and they work hard. I think we try to take care of them as much as we can, but it's a, it's a hard job and sometime people, I think, are not fair to the workers. As a counselor, our new counselor will realize all what's going on most in town. We, we don't, like I said, we don't hear much when we're in our little home, but when we're here, we, we know what's going on around town lots of time. Pat will have a, I think, an easy job also, a hard job, because he, lots of new counselor. Like I said, the first two, three years, I, I had a lot of trouble to know what's going on and all those, NOHFC and all those abbreviations, we, I think sometime we don't know what Joanne is talking about, but we, we figure out in the long run. So if Will send you an email and you don't know what it means, just ask him, he's really nice and polite and he'll explain to you. There's a lot of abbreviation, there's a lot of, but that's the government and we have to accept this and that's, that's how it's run. So thank you very much, thank you, Tony. I was, you worked for two mayor, Bill and you, and it was a pleasure to help both of you. And all the counselors there, it was the same thing, I never had any problem with, with anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shamir. Counselor Kylie.
Yes, I'd like to echo along the same lines as my fellow counselors and also thank you to the town of Kirkland Lake for their support in the election. I think we've got some great people coming on council. As Jong Gi said, there will be some challenges and a learning curve, but I think we're all in agreement that they want to do what's best for the town. I'd like to thank my fellow counselors for their support during the past four years. We didn't always agree, but we, we agreed to disagree in a few cases, but I think we worked reasonably well together and I wish them all the best. Tony, it was a pleasure working with you again, we did many years ago, and I wish you the best. Norm, Jim and Todd and Jong Gi, all the best in your next career. Might be called retirement, I'm not sure, but, but enjoy life. You've worked hard, you deserve it.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie.
I'd like, certainly like to close off by first congratulating the newly elected council and mayor-elect Kylie. I promised Stacy I won't get her name wrong anymore, apologize for that. And you know, when I was asked this morning, what I, what I was thinking today, I guess first thing that came to my mind was how quickly the last 15 years have, have gone by and it's been a real pleasure for me to serve the people of Kirkland Lake. And as people were alluding, counselors alluding to earlier, you know, just how important our, our staff was and, you know, elected officials come and go, but there's one, one steady anchor and that's the staff. And it's certainly been a pleasure for me to work with all staff over the 15 years. As mayor, you work more closely with staff, so over the past four years, I've gotten to know a lot of the staff a lot better. Couldn't be more proud to, to have been the mayor and going forward, I again want to wish the newly elected council good luck. You'll have your, your, your challenges, but you know, it's important that, you know, one of the reasons I think our council, and over the 15 years, we've, we've been able to, I, I believe we've accomplished a lot, is, you know, for the most part, we've all shared the same vision. You know, we never had projects going and then when the new council came, we canceled those projects and went to new ones, so we've shared the, the same vision and I think that's how you get things done. So I would encourage counselors to come. You'll find that what you bring forward during your term of council will take many years for it to come to fruition, just like what we've done over the past 15 years, we're seeing come to fruition now. So certainly proud of everything that we've been able to accomplish. It's been a real pleasure working with each one of you and I want to thank the people of Kirkland Lake for having supported me in, in all the elections and it was a real pleasure for me and I was certainly proud to represent the people of Kirkland Lake over the past 15 years, so thank you very much. And with that, we'll, we'll close the council meeting.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council adjourns its regular meeting of November 6, 2018.
All in favor? Last time. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much.